Call the meeting to order. Would everyone rise for the invocation? And Pastor Jeff Chipwood from Anchor Church, could you please lead us in the invocation?
Let's pray. Dear God, we come to you thanking you for another day of life and the beauty of this day. Lord, we thank you for your blessings. I pray that you'll be with those that serve in the military, that you will protect them as they guard the freedom which we enjoy here. Also be with those public servants, the policemen and firemen who protect us, Lord. We pray that you will grant your blessings upon them. And, Lord, I ask for wisdom and guidance for the members of the city council, that you will grant them the knowledge they need to make the decisions that affect the lives of others. And bless our city. Thank you for it and for what we enjoy here. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Councilman Slakka, could you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
It'll be an honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilwoman Slakka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Here.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Here.
Councilwoman Longheart.
Here.
All right. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right. We are at proclam-- let's see, public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak to any agenda item only, agenda items only, please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Barb Harrington, and I'm here to represent RLR Investments, and in this particular case, the Promenade Shopping Center. The reason I'm here today is to speak specifically on Agenda Item Number H. And I would like to thank the city council for approving our permit for the March 13 Business Expo and co-sponsoring with us and the Benita Springs Chamber of Commerce as well. Agenda Item H is for an event that we would like to hold on April 12. It's called Burgers and Bubbles, and it is a burger competition on the agenda-- on the item here. It says wars. We'll change that to competition. I like that word a little bit better. What we would like to do is we've invited several restaurants from the area. We're still working on the list, and we would like to partner with the city of Benita Springs. We are also working in conjunction with Entertainment Florida LLC and the beneficiary, which is the Benita Assistance Office, to pull this together. We anticipate 20 restaurants, and we will partner with some beverage distributors for both adult and alcoholic and non-alcoholic bubbling beverages to pair with the burgers. At the end of the event, we'll have competition for who had the best burger. We're going to have a panel of judges of three to four people voting on the burgers, and we hope that this becomes a regular event year after year at the Promenade to benefit the Assistance Office, because it seems like if we're doing food, it should benefit the Assistance Office. So that is my comment this morning.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
I certainly hope you have actual experts on that committee.
Well, we have one that we know for sure, which would be Mayor Bill Nelson.
Burger expert.
We're working on the other ones. Thank you.
Looks good on my resume. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Mary Will Slaba, Director of Benita Springs Assistance Office, and I want to thank you for considering the approval of this event, Bubbles and Burgers, particularly because on the 35th anniversary of the Benita Assistance Office, it fits perfect. It's about the celebration. It's about bringing the community together, and we are very pleased to partner with the Promenade to bring one more fun event, family event, to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Fred Forbes, Hunter's Ridge, resident of Benita Springs. Good morning. I really want to advocate that city council follow through and permit or support the award of an initial contract to Kevin Irwin, as recommended by at least four people on the task force. You all asked for a committee to be put together, and that was a pretty big vote, as I recall. We have a moratorium that's in effect. We must, first of all, whatever the work output that we're going to get that's going to be meaningful that we can give to city council, it must be done roughly around eight months or so from the date the moratorium started. We've already used up a month, and it's important that we get some of these contracts underway because the task force itself, whereas we know things that need to be done, we do not have all the expertise to do this. The actions that were taken by the four people was both legal and appropriate, considering the timeframe. Time is of the essence. As I say, we've already used up a month. And the initial resolution that was passed, which created the water task force, part of it was to provide financial resources to allow the task force to hire and retain or the city experts. Key word, independent experts. And if you go back to the public hearings, that word, independent, and someone that's not in the local sandbox came over again and again and again. So I just want to urge you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Kevin Berry, the president of the Benita Blues Charitable Foundation. We've already been approved for our event coming up in about a month, but I just wanted to thank everyone here for working with us over the years and helping us grow to be an actually international-recognized festival now. This year, we have people coming from Portugal, Germany, Canada, and across the United States. So without the beautiful venue, the city of Benita, and all the help, we, I don't think we would have made it to there. So thank you very much. And also, this, we also have a new venture with Lansdowne Street coming up. It's on, I believe, the letter F on the green sheet today, where we're looking and hope you'll pass a, the permit and a charitable permit for a two-day event, the 16th and 17th. We're hooking up with them to do a little function on the 16th and then work with them on the 17th for St. Patrick's Day. Again, fundraising for all the charities that we work with. So thank you for everything in the past, and hope we can get that done for the work on the 16th and 17th also.
And thank you for all your hard work.
My pleasure.
Great event. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning. For the record, Nicole Johnson, here on behalf of the Conservancy of Southwest Florida, and I want to speak on Item 11C. The Conservancy, along with our 4,500-plus family members, and the Conservancy is a member of the DRGR Citizens Water Task Force, supports hiring Kevin Irwin Consulting Ecologists, Inc., for consulting work in support of the task force work. We believe that the breadth and depth of issues assigned to the task force justifies the recommendation for hiring this consultant. Want to just briefly touch on five points. I provided a letter that had more in-depth perspective on the Conservancy's position, but just five quick things. The first issue is that this is not another study. Many people have pointed out correctly that there have been lots of studies done on the Benita DRGR. However, the Conservancy believes that even with all of these studies, the city has not to date been able to quantify in a meaningful way the impact on water resources from restoration, conservation, or increased intensity and density in the DRGR. So the second point, how would Kevin Irwin's work product differ from all of these past work products? What Kevin is proposing to do is create the vehicle that links all of this information together and fills in any gaps that may exist. What the product will be is a decision-making tool that will allow the city to engage in a series of what-if scenarios. Various activities and land uses can be inputted, and the model will demonstrate how that activity impacts the DRGR as a whole. This is a very important, active, interactive work product. The third issue is process. The Conservancy does understand that the most common process for hiring a consultant is for a city-initiated scope of work and sending it out for a letter of intent, but that's not the only way that the city engages in consultants. Only last month, council, I believe unanimously, voted to approve the Regional Planning Council doing some work for the Spring Creek Restoration Plan. This was something that was initiated by a council member. She put it on the agenda, along with the scope of work. It didn't go out for bid. It was in two phases, and it was approved. The fourth issue is the cost, and we understand this is a big issue and a very sensitive issue. It's a two-part effort, which the task force has proposed. We've recommended initially to council that the $19,000 be spent to hire Kevin to do the first part of this process. This would be in collecting the information and getting things ready to proceed forward with the modeling. The second part would be another $25,000 plus the cost of a modeler. However, the decision-making tool that will be the result of this will be the city's product that you'll be able to use into the future. Modelers do cost money. It could double the price of this, and the Conservancy believes that this is something that is necessary, and we actually offer to contribute at least $5,000 to the city to help offset the cost of this modeler. And we would ask that others, who are interested stakeholders, perhaps also come forward and offer to help defray this cost. Mine had offered, as they were asking to be out of the moratorium, that they might have some money to assist the task force in some of these things. I think they should be approached. And the fifth priority, very quickly, is about priorities. And the city does have a $28 million budget. You value what you are going to be budgeting for, but you couldn't have anticipated this in your budget. So in this case, you're really, what you prioritize, water resources, is that what you value? We believe that the cost of this is something that's very critical as the city's blue or green infrastructure. So we ask that you consider this, that you move forward with the contract, and the Conservancy will be there to assist with the financial contribution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. Carolyn Gallagher for the record of Cedar Creek. I'm addressing two items on the agenda, 7B Trees for the Middle School and 11C, the Water Task Force Contract with an ecologist. As everyone knows, the Water Task Force is beginning its investigation of the DRGR area with the hope of understanding what happens there relating to water issues such as mitigating the flooding, meeting water standards for lakes and streams, quality and quantity of drinking water, et cetera. This is the most important issue, in my opinion, that the city will undertake this year, or maybe ever, because it will help determine how the property will be used and cement the path the city takes in the future. Once the decisions are made, there will be no going back. This is the only year we can do this. It should be timely. Item 11C proposes hiring expert, an expert ecologist for about $19,000 to make sense of all the information on the previous contradictory studies and begin to take us to a better position of what is happening in the DRGR now and in the future. And that's the modeling she was talking about. I urge the council to vote yes for this item. Additionally, I suggest that if there is concern about the cost, consider moving money from the tree planting program of the middle school to this task. We can always budget to plant the trees in the future, but this is our one chance to get the water right. And remember, we have the one-year moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
And council members, I'm Brad Cornell, and I'm here on behalf of Audubon of the Western Everglades, which is the local chapter, and Audubon, Florida, and its Corkscrew Swamp Sanctuary. And I wanted to address Agenda Item 11C, the proposal to hire consultant Kevin Irwin. I want to support this proposal. I know this seems like it's another study, but as you heard Nicole Johnson give some details, this is not just a study. The work product of this is a model, a watershed model, that will allow you to plug in various options in the landscape, land uses, restoration options, and see what the result is. Models are not the real world, but they help us plan. And what you have tasked this Water Task Force with is setting the stage for creating, ultimately by December, the information and the foundation on which we're going to create a good plan for the DRGR in Benita Springs. This kind of planning, this kind of tool, is not something that we have in our back pocket right now. I think the money spent is well worth it. I know you don't have it identified in your budget now, but I think this is a bargain. Audubon has hired Kevin Irwin for our own restoration planning and work and permitting, and he is an expert. I think he would do a tremendous job, and I believe there are some great modelers that he would have at his disposal to ultimately come up with that model for our use, for your use, for the Water Task Force use. I think this is the most efficient thing. We've spent years waiting to figure out what to do. This is the kind of tool that I think we need. I have no objection to looking at other consultants as far as process goes, but I do note, and I think you realize, there's a very short timeframe in getting this done. Kevin Irwin has a proven track record in Lee County's DRGR throughout this watershed. We've worked with him. I think he would do a tremendous job. So I, on that basis, Audubon recommends your moving forward with hiring Kevin Irwin Consulting Ecologist. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, everyone. My name's Aaron Schimmel. I'm the general manager of Lansdowne Street. And in regards to Agenda Item F, I just want to say thank you for giving us the opportunity. This will be our eighth St. Patty's Day event. We get a lot, a ton of visitors from all over Southwest Florida. The locals love it, and we're just excited to, like I said, get the opportunity to try to do it one more year. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Russ Lord. This is my wife, Chris. Chris and I are residents of the Nuttinglykett neighborhood over by Riverside Park. And as you may remember, I was here before, and I'm going to say it again. We are here to try to encourage the members of the council to vote in favor of keeping Rusty the dog statue that's there at the park now. Keep him there. We have a dog, and we go down to the park in the morning and the afternoon, and we intermingle with many other people and their dogs who have come to enjoy Rusty and appreciate his presence there. Rusty's been there from the day that some money was spent to put in some cement pads and the attachments to keep him in place, and he's doing well. We would like him to stay there. We also noticed, when we were at the Fish Fry last weekend, that Rusty has a sibling over at the Lyles Hotel, and we think that little guy would be a very appropriate little fellow to go to the new park. So there you have an emotional answer. There's a fiscal reason why you want to just keep Rusty the way he is, where he is, and there's many, many people that use the park that would appreciate that. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. For the record, Martha Simons. You know me. Okay, real quick list. Thanks for the light. Middle school, do it. That's great. That's going to look wonderful. Get the chain link fence down and make it beautiful. We've been wanting that for a long time. Rusty the dog, come on, team. Let's keep him in place. The folks, I think they've microchipped him, and the dogs have probably marked him. So, you know, they're all going to need him there. But he really has been a wonderful asset, and also, the larger dog is better near the kids' playground, because you imagine if you put the little dog over there, kids will be clamming all over it, and it's Rusty. So, second, third, the water. Nicole Ryan did mention that when you set priorities in our budget, which we did last year and many years before us, we look at what do we spend money on, and what does that say about what we value? Let's think about how much money we've spent on roads since 2000. Probably like 40-something million dollars. That's a lot of money. Then we compare it to what we spend money on water. Not so much. We try, but it seems to be knocked down to a lower priority. Listen, we can't live without water, shelter, clothes, food, right? Yeah, they had dirt roads here before, grass roads, sandy roads. They're a nice convenience, but you can't live without water. So even if you have to set a line item for $200,000, hey, I don't know where you're going to get it from, Carl, but hey, I'll fork over those trees on Front Street, you know, because maybe we'll get the utilities moved over there instead off of US 41. But just think, old 41, we spent $18 million going from Rosemary up to US 41 and 41. $18 million, it's a lot of money. So to ask $19,000, but really to think about how much money have we spent on studies, $450,000. But this is the right one, because in Policy 1.7.1, in the comp plan, it says, "In order to protect water resources, do the study." Well, we haven't done that study yet. We did a hydrology study with Greg Rawl, but now we're going to have a tool so that this council and future councils will be able to make decisions about water. Okay, third, hire Kevin Irwin because he's the best. You're not going to get any better than that. And Vice Mayor, you have Vice Mayor coming up? I want to challenge you to break the glass ceiling and appoint this lady, elect this lady right here. She's got seniority on the council, and she's probably the only one not running for mayor. And I want to encourage you, she's been a great advocate and a star in our city, and I think you can't go wrong having Janet Martin for Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward.
Good morning. April Hoover in Spanish Wells. First, I would like to ask you to please support hiring Kevin Irwin as well. I think it's very important to the future of our country. I mean, of our city. I'm sorry. I've been following national politics too much. Anyway, I think it's important to the future of our city. So I also am here to ask that you pass an ordinance in regard to Norfolk pine trees. I believe it was about a year, year and a half ago, the council passed banning planting these trees that grow up to 80, 100 feet tall. This tree is considered a nuisance tree in Florida, and it came from Norfolk Island near Australia. Excuse me. They cause major structural damage and worse, personal injury. During Hurricanes Charlie and Wilma, our neighbors had two towering pine trees, I'm guessing 80 feet tall, towering near our rear lot line. During both hurricanes, the branches just snapped off like twigs and flew through our pool screen, damaging several screens, about $1,500 damage. And that's not as big a concern. My concern is these trees have very shallow root systems, and they just topple over. During Hurricane Charlie, another neighbor down the street had a huge tree with, I don't know, the trunk had to be about this big around. It looked like someone just pushed it over. And luckily, it fell right directly between two houses. Had that fallen on either of those structures, it would have caved in the roof, and it could have hurt somebody inside. So anyway, I'm here to ask that you please consider an ordinance that would consider a height restriction or giving a certain allotment of time to remove these trees. Most people remove them on their own, knowing how dangerous they are. But unfortunately, I, I'm trying to say this delicately, I have a neighbor that didn't want to remove their tree because of the cost. So every year, we worry about hurricanes, and we see these trees flying in the winds, heavy winds, and I just don't want to worry about it. And our pool deductible, our pool cage deductible now is $8,800. And as I understand, most insurance companies now won't even insure pool cages, I believe, for this reason. So every year, I live in fear, wondering, oh, my God, is that tree going to fall on our cage, or worse, our roof? And it's an $8,800 deductible. So I hope that you'll consider this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
For the record, Jesse Purdon, District 2. Mr. Mayor, council, distinguished guests. A few things real quick, and I'm not even going to touch on the water, which will surprise some of you. Number one, I'm on Team Save Rusty, Mr. Gibson. Number two, allow Lansdowne Street to do the event. I don't know if you've been over to Lansdowne. Most of you probably have. It's a great establishment. They do things well. They're going to be busy on St. Patrick's Day anyway. If they're going to do this event and it's going to give money to charities, I'm all for that, and I think that you guys should be too. Additionally, the Vice Mayor thing, not even something I really thought about on the way in. And as often as I disagree with Martha, I don't even think that that's a crazy idea. I really like Janet Martin. I am, I'm a District 2 person, and I think that would be a very exciting and interesting, interesting thought. So I would urge you all to entertain that potentially. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Seeing none. We'll go on to the, we don't have any proclamations or presentations, and which is unusual for us. Hey, there it is. Consent agenda. Council, we have Items A through H. Is there anything that you would wish to pull at this time? Take your time. Take a look at it. Nothing? Is there a motion?
Move to--
Oh, excuse me. Wait a minute. Yes, Audrey?
If I could just move Item A, I just want to discuss it for a brief moment, or pull it for a brief moment.
Okay, we have, we'll honor the staff request to go ahead and pull A. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
Yes.
There's a motion in a second.
Sorry.
Sorry about that. To approve the remainder. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye. Audrey?
Yes, the reason I wanted to pull it is there's just some minor changes I want to make to it after talking with staff. Those changes came to me yesterday, mostly dealing with the payment and also making very clear that the caretaker will not be able to do work other than, you know, protect for vandalism. That would be normally his assigned duties, because it is an employee. So, minor changes, but still go forward with the contract, but I'll be making some tweaks to it.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a motion is second. Any other discussion?
Yes, Ben.
Yes, go ahead.
The vandalism that was done to the structure, or whatever it was, can we have a, or I would like to have a report on that to know how much damage was done.
You're talking about painting the faucet?
I have no idea, but I know there was things done there.
To which, I mean, vandalism, I mean, we had--
Well, whatever happened inside the building--
Oh, inside the building. Yep, I can give you a, we have, I have documentation of that, so I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slakka.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay. Audrey, we have a continuance of a second reading and public hearing.
Thank you. This is an amendment to Benita Springs Land Development Code, amending and replacing Chapter 7, environmental of the City of Benita Springs Land Development Code, amending Section 7-41 through 7-81, dock and shoreline structures, creating facility siting criteria, transfer of watercraft slip credits, TSCs, and beach, dune, walkovers provisions, amending Sections 7-111 through 7-116, marine sanitation, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and effective date. This is a second reading that has been continued from December 18, 2013. The reason it was continued was because of one marina. We wanted to make sure the details were worked out. We are not changing the ordinance. So the ordinance is the same as what would have been adopted in December. What we are doing, the staff is going to recommend at that time, doing a variance process for that one particular marina.
Okay. Council, you have any questions, comments? No? Is there a motion to move the item?
No.
You have a motion, is there a second? Do we have a second? Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
A public comment.
I'm sorry. Public comment. Any members of the public wish to speak to this item? Please come forward.
Oh, my God. I just thought I could get three minutes on everything that you do. That'd just kill you, wouldn't it, Ben? Okay, real quick. Remember, we talked about when this first came up, about cleaning up the dilapidated structures along the river? How is that proceeding? Just think about that for the next reading. I know code was talked to about that, and they were going to go look at that, but I don't know how that has progressed, because I'm not here anymore. So, good luck.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Okay, we'll go ahead and I think we'll close public comment, close public comment. And we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Okay, and that's all you have under eight, right, Audrey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and at this time, we'll have public comment again. Anyone wishing to speak on anything, just come forward.
Fred Forbes, for the record. I wanted to point out some really good things that have happened in the Water Task Force to date. At the meeting, we had the previous one to yesterday. We had a nice presentation from South Florida Water Management District. And in that, there was a lot of question and answer between the members of the task force and, in particular, Dan Walters from South Florida Water Management. A couple things that came out that are really, I think, important for council to realize, and that is that the question was asked of Mr. Walters when he was explaining South Florida Water Management District design criteria for stormwater management. And that's the one area that has never really been studied very much in the DRGR. The question that I asked was, is there other counties and municipalities within the 22 counties that South Florida Water Management is over that have their own locally adopted stormwater flood management design criteria? And the answer came back, yes. And he gave some examples. Another question that was posed, which I found highly interesting, the answer was that, as you know, South Florida Water Management does not involve themselves in what happens if an individual that wants to build that one home in 10 acres, that's, they don't get involved in it, meaning there's no stormwater management criteria of any significance that they have to deal with. I asked the question, is there any other counties and/or municipalities within those 22 counties that have local regulations that require stormwater management design even on smaller projects such as one home in 10 acres or two homes in 10 acres? And the answer came back, yes, there are, which means that, it doesn't mean city council would agree with it, but it means that if we did provide you recommendations, that that would be something that you would not be pioneering, because there's other counties and/or municipalities that do such things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. And we are to the City Attorney's Report. Audrey, what do you have for us?
Thank you. Two items. The first item, I can go very quickly, well, both items can go quickly. Diane has reported that everyone has signed their affirmation, so thank you on the code of conduct. So one housekeeping done. The second housekeeping is the election of the deputy mayor. It is not something that's discussed much in the charter. There is the office. It is a charter officer. The sections of the charter where it discussed, deputy mayor is listed there. It is, however, in the code of conduct, and doing so, it says in the code of conduct, after the election, you're to do it in the election. So please proceed.
Okay. Counsel, we're gonna be accepting your suggestions here and for election. I'd like to go ahead and put up for nomination, Council McIntosh. I'd just like to just throw in there for Councilwoman Martin, and all of you would make great deputy mayors, but my main concern with it, he's done a good job here the past couple of years, and plus we have a referendum that's gonna be really tight in the Pelican Landing area. So I think that that sends a signal, having that representative in that area be the deputy mayor, I think it sends a positive signal to those people in that area. And that's my response to why we should have him aboard there. Any other, any other? Yes?
Yeah, no, I mean, I love you all. You know that. I would like to nominate Councilman Bill Longheart for deputy mayor. I think his leadership over the years has proved exemplary, and I'd like to nominate Bill wholeheartedly.
Okay. Are there any further nominations?
Well, I like the idea of having somebody that's not gonna be running for mayor as deputy mayor, so I would like to nominate Councilwoman Martin.
Are you telling her she can't run?
Well, no, I'm just saying, I've heard rumors of who's, you know, running, who's not running.
You're trying to take her out of her, aren't you? Aren't you, Mike? You can't fool me. I'm teasing.
I know I can't beat her, so I wanna.
So we have three nominated. Any other further nominations? All right, we'll close nominations. And could you please pass out these? And you're gonna sign these, so this isn't a secret ballot here.
Thank you.
Check off your choice.
Will you vote for yourself?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, sorry, you haven't nominated. You missed your chance to nominate yourself. And Audrey, just to clarify before we start, well, doesn't matter, it's the person with the most number of votes is the winner. Is that correct?
Well, that's interesting, because the charter says for any affirmative action of council, you need four votes. So you may have to vote more than once if that happens.
Well, let's see what happens.
Can I, yes, Audrey?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Audrey, just for clarification purposes, the rule says that if the mayor decides to take Lori to the, to the space station and not come back, then the deputy mayor would come in and take over.
I don't think it says that.
Well, not the space station, pardon me.
Would come in and take over, and then there'd have to be an election. However, if it's 180 days or less, then that deputy mayor would stay in that position until the end of the term.
Correct. And what would happen is that council member would lose their council seat. They would go into the mayor if it's under six months. If it is over six months, the, something happens to you, sorry.
No, he went to the space station. It's a better way.
You would have, you would hold a special election for the office.
Okay. Would you like to collect them? This is our lovely city clerk, Diane. Gee, thanks, Ben. Could be worse. She could be flipping those little things around. Anyone want to buy a vowel while Vanna's up? Sorry?
She's already in the audience.
Oh, shoot, that's right.
She's sitting back there.
Yeah, from yesterday's water meeting.
Yeah, she's Vanna White. That's that lady right there.
Okay, as we're waiting to get that done here, let's see, that's all I have under there on the City Attorney's Report. I'm gonna give you guys an update. By the way, on our trip to Washington, Ben goes to Washington, Mr. Nelson goes to, whatever.
We have four votes for Deputy Vice Mayor McIntosh.
Okay, and so that's it.
Congratulations.
There you are. We are, but Deputy Mayor is Steve McIntosh. Steve, congratulations. And those will be available, anybody that wants to inspect them. All right? And so we will move along. Do you have anything else under City Attorney's Report?
No, sir.
Do we need to take a vote to ratify that, or that's it?
That's your vote, actually.
That's the vote. Okay, just checking with you. Don't want to hear about it after the meeting. Okay, we are to the City Managers' Report. Carl, that's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have four items this morning, three on the agenda. The first one, of course, is the monthly reports from our finance department. We are continuing to do well. If you have any questions, let us know. No questions? Okay, I'm gonna ask John to handle B and C.
Item B, the first one you have is recommendation from staff relative to the work being done by the task force, the Water Task Force. As you know, you, when you establish that task force, you also indicated that you would set up a line item for funding for expenses. What we're asking in this case is to move from contingency $2,500 so that we can start paying some of the minor bills that we're accumulating. In particular, we had some map reproductions done outside of the office for the group. We anticipate that there may be some other minor expenses that come up over the course of the next few meetings, and if we exceed that $2,500, obviously, we'd have to come back to council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. And to clarify for everyone, this isn't the, this isn't the non-study.
Right.
This is the, this is just for, to give you some spending money for the committee. Okay, motion in a second. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Okay, Item B.
The second item is the one that you've already heard from the public on, and I believe you've gotten a letter from the Conservancy on it also, on their position. And again, what staff tried to do in this green sheet is to point out to council that while we are not taking a position as staff on the particular qualifications of this consultant, nor are we taking a position on whether or not it's appropriate to fund another study or non-study at this point.
This is it.
Staff did feel that it was appropriate to point out the differences in the process that was used by the task force as opposed to what is typically done by staff, if it was a staff-initiated project. I think we've laid out a couple of our concerns. I think you also have some language in the green sheet that was provided by the city attorney about her concerns, and we'll turn it over to you at this point.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? Steve?
Just a couple of comments. I've said it several times, we put a huge burden on the back of seven citizens, and I want to support that recommendation, whatever they come up with, because it'll be the right one, I'm confident. I'm not convinced that, well, let me say, I think there are two objectives for the task force. The first objective is to create a clear, defined message of whether we can or cannot develop in the DRGR. And that's, it's simpler than what it sounds, and it's more complicated than what I've just made it sound. But that's what the answer's gonna be, yes or no, and a standard of getting there if there is a yes, and a reason why if it's no. The thing that, the other objective that I think has to come out of that task force is that we have created a credibility for that answer among the citizens. That means that we need to follow protocol, that we need to make sure that we have not done anything to indicate that we may have had a preconceived notion about what ought to happen out there. I don't want to jeopardize the credibility of the task force by, by going past something that people are obviously talking about. And it's not $19,000. It's not $50,000. As Ms. Johnson said this morning, it's probably close to double that. So as a fiscally responsible dius of city council people and the mayor, I think it's important that we have a discussion about and information from the folks that are gonna conduct the study. I would love to have a model. I think it's the right way to approach it. I'm not comfortable that we jump into this without doing, without vetting it and without making sure that we've, we've dotted all the i's, crossed all the t's before we spend this amount of money. I don't think two weeks is gonna put this, this entire project in a pinch. If we ask, even if we don't go out for RFPs, if we ask the person who's proposed the way this model will going is gonna go to come in at least so we know that person's face or their organization before we spend that kind of money, I think that's appropriate. I've been on the website several times. I know the projects they've done are all good. That's not, that's not my point. I think we need to make sure that we, as a council, have done what's correct and expected of us with the taxpayers' money. And if we don't do that, then we're making a mistake, not only as a council, but we're making a mistake because we're putting more pressure on the task force than, than they should have. So I would, I would make a motion when the time comes, an after discussion, or I'll make the motion for discussion, that we not, that we not make this money available right now, that we hold off two weeks until we can get a presentation by the people who are going to make this, the modeling study, and then make that decision. That's my, that's my motion.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second for conversation.
Okay, yes. And you had something to say?
Yes, well, I wanted to say that Steve said it very well. I was thinking on the same line that my vision personally for the task force was that they were going to comb through all of the studies that we had prior and look at them and say, okay, we agree on this, so that study can go over here, but this may be this part we don't agree on, so we'll move it over here. And then come together at some point and say, well, these are the questions that aren't answered in any of those studies, and this is where we need to go. And it just seems like that we've negated the abilities of our, members of our task force by just jumping straight in and to send it to a consultant. So I also have to question the procedure on that, because this isn't how we've ever done it before. I'm not questioning at all Mr. Irwin's credentials. I'm not questioning the cost, anything that, but I think that the procedure needs to change, and we need more information about what that whole scope would be. But I also feel that the task force needs to dig in. You know, we put them in there to do that for us, unfortunately, because we could not come to consensus to make that vote ourselves. So I'd rather not negate their being there and put them to work. And we'll get it down to where we can, and then we'll move it forward to get those questions answered.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to chime in here? Mike?
Well, you know, they do have a big burden on their shoulders, and I believe this is to help them see all the studies, kinda get it in a better format for them to make better decisions. It is a lot of money, but we did just spend another $90,000 on a dog park that, you know, is already at $300,000. And this is a very important issue, so.
Good. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Ben. The task force meeting, which I attended all the meetings so far, there was no one else on the Water Task Force that recommended anybody else. And to me, that's significant. I would hope that we would understand that over the years in this city, the monies that have been spent on many different projects meant, most of them all worthy, but some of the things that we've spent money on, in my opinion, were trivial. But this particular subject is very close to home for me, because I live in District 6. But I know how much this will impact the total community in terms of construction, water, all the, all the things that come up. And just noticing the last two weeks or three weeks, the traffic circumstances that we have in the entire city with the amount of traffic increases that we've had, especially east of I-75, and of course, at Benita Beach Road and Old 41, where the traffic is backing up all the way to beyond the railroad tracks going west. In addition to that, many people, not only in District 6, but the beach people especially too, are very much concerned with the quality of life issues that we have in this city. And I happen to think it's wonderful here for the people that are already here. And we already have approved, which has nothing to do with water, 3,100 new residential units on Benita Beach Road, and counting the rest of the five communities already there, we'll have 7,600 units, residential units on Beach Road, not even taking into consideration the land in the DRGR. So it has nothing to do with water. It has to do with, and also road structures. We don't have any road structures that can handle the volume that would occur if there's some development up in the DRGR. We have no outlet to the north. We only have Terry Street and Benita Grande. So we really have to look very hard at this, and if the water comes through, that there's gotta be more, can, how homes will be approved? Well, we'll have to live with that, and I'm willing to work with everybody, and hopefully there'll be a good resolution of it. But I do support having the, and then the money that's being, that's been requested, over the years, we have spent millions of dollars on other things that perhaps we still don't have any return on investment, so I think it's a worthy thing, and I'm going to spend the money.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. I'm gonna go to Steve.
Well, I have a question about Councilman Longheart's comments. It's, you created a preconceived notion that there's gonna be development out there. The whole idea of the task force is to make a decision on whether it would or would not be. So I think that's inappropriate.
Well, what you think is inappropriate and what I think is inappropriate are two different things. And the fact is that the people that live here right now, perhaps you wouldn't be impounded in Pelican Landing with the circumstances, but the people that live on the beach and the people that live in District 6 want the water done correctly. And by the way, I've also toured that area out there, and everything that's built out there is dyed, but there must be a reason for that.
I agree. And I want the water right, too. All I'm saying is, let's not, let's not put notions in the task force's head about what the council wants.
Well, Steve, everyone up here is allowed to speak their mind. I'm speaking my mind, and I don't think that's inappropriate, and I don't interrupt you, and please don't interrupt me. Thank you.
Oh, and I don't think Steve did. But anyway, but anyway, there we have it. Steve?
Thank you. I also had a concern about the funding for this project. However, after attending yesterday's meeting, it seemed like there was more of a meeting of the minds than previously. So when I thought about the Conservancy willing to give $5,000 for this study, I think that says a lot. And now also, in
And now also, in District Three, I believe there's going to be some other contributors that come forth, so, you know, we're down to $14,000 for the Phase One, so at least now.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Sorry, there are a couple of things that I've heard being discussed that I'm not sure I'm clear on, so before you take a vote, I just wanted to get a couple of things on the record. One is that, as Councilman Slakda just indicated, the Conservancy has indicated that they may be willing to contribute some funding. My understanding, though, is that that was not towards Scope Items One and Two, which are the $19,000 fee, but for future aspects of the scope of work, which would be the modeling. And I'm not sure that there's a meeting of the minds on that. The second thing is that there has been a lot of discussion about a modeling tool. I have always been a big proponent of those kinds of tools to help the council make its decisions. It could be very helpful in this case. But again, typically, when it's a staff-initiated project, we would define the scope of work and be clear about what we're asking. I'm not clear on whether or not Task One and Two, which are according to the scope that Mr. Irwin provided, is to collect and synthesize all available information, and the second thing is to do ecological mapping. I'm not convinced that that results in a modeling tool. My understanding is that the modeling tool comes in the future tasks, Three through Eight. So again, it might be a misunderstanding on my part, but I don't anticipate that we will have a full modeling tool based on Tasks One and Two. That, again, might just come from confusion where we haven't prepared the scope of work.
It's just 5,000 less, no matter what.
All right, listen, this is very important, everybody agrees it's very important, all right? If it's important to get it right, then it's important to do it right, and it's important that the process remain intact, and that it not be able to be questioned, or the ability to question the veracity of the information or the source of the information should be plain. That's why we have the Professional Services Act, is so that when you choose a consultant, you ask for qualifications, you make a RFQ, a request for qualifications. Look, here's what we want to do. We want to invite anybody and everybody, we want the best. It's an important question. The reason that that law exists, or that regulation or guideline exists, is because councils, I mean, if we just kind of go, you know what, let's go get our pal so-and-so to do this, because we like them, and by the way, you know what, we kind of think that they're going to side with us, and they're going to be able to, you know, they're right along the lines of the way we think. That's not what you want. I don't know about the rest of you, but I want the bad news, I want the good news, I'm not going to predispose myself to any particular one side of it. If it comes in from somebody, if you really want someone, if you really do want someone who's an outsider, I've heard people say, we don't want an outsider, then I hear people that say that they want an outsider, but if you really want someone who's unbiased, if you really care about the truth, if you really want to know exactly what the facts are out there, if you care, then you'll cast a wide net, and you'll have staff, go ahead and have the committee make the instructions, say, here's the information we need, here's what we need the RFQ to look like, go have some people come in, we'll take a look at them, and we'll all work together to find the best person to do that. I think that's the way to do it, to not do it that way. I mean, if we hire somebody that the Conservancy, we feel, the Conservancy feels good about them because they do work for them, and they know them. That doesn't give me a warm feeling, I mean, I'm sure it gives them a warm feeling, but I want somebody who's completely unbiased as possible. And they may not give me the answer that I like, I don't care, I just want an unbiased opinion. So I'm not in favor of this. I don't like doing business like that, and I know that some private nonprofits, I know they can do however they want, they can hire whoever they want, but we have a higher standard. We are set and held to a higher standard, and if we hire somebody at the whim of whatever because, for whatever reasons, it's not right. I don't believe in doing business like that, I don't think it's fiscally responsible. And that's my, I don't know, buck fifty, whatever. Yes, any other comments on this? Or, I see, we have a motion, and your motion is...
My motion is to hold for two weeks to have the consultant come in, make a presentation to the council before we make this decision.
Okay.
And I think it was seconded.
There's a motion and a second on that, and I can't support that, because I think that there should be an actual RFQ process, and that's how I'll be voting, so anyway. Are there any other additional comments on the motion? Everyone understand the motion?
I need to ask a question to the city attorney.
I beg your pardon?
May I ask a city attorney a question?
Absolutely.
My motion was based on trying to get more information to the city council, if I violated the rules and regulations expected of us in doing procedural work and procurement.
And my answer would be kind of. And the reason is, is right now, they have lowered the amount of the tasks so that is below the threshold. But it's obvious, based on this, that Mr. Irwin, especially with the last task, is his travel, and here you're asking, he did come before the task force, he comes here again, and I'm sure that was for presentations after getting hired, you know, he has 4,000 as Task Eight, and I'm sure that has to intermix within, so I'm not sure he's going to be even amenable to Task One and Two just being as-is, unless he's planning to get more tasks, and if you are, then you are violating the statute. Probably a better time with that two weeks is see if staff could prepare an RFP that could go through the process, that council could support.
I withdraw my motion.
I, too.
Okay, is, we have the motions withdrawn, is there another motion?
Yes, I move to approve C.
There's a motion to approve C as-is, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? Okay, I think we all know where we stand here, let's go ahead and call, a roll call.
Councilwoman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
No.
Councilwoman Martin?
No.
Councilwoman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
No.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries? All right.
Thank you.
Need any other information?
Nope.
Okay, good, let's go ahead and move on, and...
Well, actually, I had a question for Carl.
Go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
Well, a few meetings back, the city had voted on sending a letter to the NPO and FDOT.
Yes, sir.
About canceling the flyover study.
Yes, sir.
I was just wondering if we've heard back anything about that, or...
No, we sent the letter, and I've not heard anything back from either one of them. We do have a meeting scheduled with FDOT coming up, I believe, either later this week or...
Next week.
Next week, right, next week. And that will be one of the topics in terms of a discussion with them, any response that they may have to the letter, as well as a number of other issues.
May I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In response to Councilman Gibson's question.
Yeah.
We had our first executive NPO meeting last Friday, last Wednesday, and I explained to the NPO Executive Committee at that point that we, the council, had denied the survey, and expect them to take that forward as well.
Okay, so your recommendation was for them to withdraw the study?
My comment was that the council had denied the study.
Thank you.
Okay, Steve, you had something?
Yes, if I may, Carl, maybe there's a reason why the water meetings are held that way, but it was, it is not kosher to me, in terms of people having to pass the mic around and all that. Isn't there a way that those seven people can be up here when the meeting takes place? Or is that, is there something wrong with that?
May I?
John?
Yeah, at the first organizational meeting, the water task force was sitting up on the dais, conversation took place about whether or not that was really the most conducive way to get conversation going amongst the members. It was their decision that we moved to a table in the center. We also talked about the handheld mics. There has been some discussion after meetings, not during the meetings, after meetings, about that setup, so I specifically asked yesterday at the meeting if everyone were comfortable, or if they wanted to make some changes to not only the physical setup, but the idea of using the handheld mics, and there was no reaction from the task force members to do anything different. Let me try to be clear, the reason for the handheld mics, we probably could do something different, but the reason for those is twofold. One is so that people who are watching on television get a better idea of who's speaking, because we have one static camera, I don't have camera operators that are going from person to person, as we do when you are inducting business. So in order for the viewing audience to know who's speaking, it's helpful to see the person holding the microphone. The second thing is, it helps the chairman control the conversation so that we don't have multiple discussions where people are talking over each other by necessitating that they hand the mic from one to the other. Now, there was a request to see if we can get some more mics, and we're going to look into that, but that was the only suggestion we had from the task force themselves.
Okay, thank you, I didn't know you didn't have an operator back there, but it just seems kind of awkward when you sit in the audience, you see the backs of people and everything when they're, you know, talking and all that, just, and then you hear people talking, and then I'll say, oh, pass the mic down, because we can't hear it, and it just seems awkward, that's all.
All right, yes, Bill?
I'd like to comment on this. We had a library task force, where did they sit?
The original library task force, I think, sat at the dais.
Right, and there's a reason for that, because that means the entire audience can see all the things that are going on. Another point, normally, the chairman usually should sit at the head of the table, whoever the chairman of the, you have them down there, I would much as matter see the person, the chairman, sitting up here. And then the other thing is, the passing of the mics, it's unprofessional. My gosh. It's, the task force are all well-meaning individuals, and I think they have, should have the courtesy to sit up here and at the entire audience, and with the chairman sitting the opposite way, he can't even see the people that are sitting behind him, and I think the chairman would like to see who's, at least I would, if I was chairman of the committee, I want to see who's out there, and make sure we recognize them when we see them.
Counsel, why don't we, why don't we just make the suggestion to the committee that they utilize the dais?
Yes.
And we'll just make that suggestion, and, I mean, you can't tell people where to sit, I don't think, but we can at least suggest that it would be, to consider a better option. Would that be all right?
Thank you, Mayor.
And this is to the benefit of the people that are on the committee, you'll have a much better perspective, and at least, I think it's wonderful, the setup that we have, because everybody knows where we all are, always at the same time, and the passing of microphones around is ridiculous.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, good, all right.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more item.
You have one more item, go ahead.
Passed out to you today before the meeting, was a proposed letter that has been requested by Lee County in terms of the flood insurance issue and trying to delay some of the rate increases that have been proposed by legislation that was passed in 2012. The mayor, as well as his staff, have been working on this to try to get those rate increases delayed, and we are requesting council's authorization for the mayor to sign the letter, along with other mayors in Lee County.
So move.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? And I'll fill you guys in on the boring details afterwards. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
All right, thank you, counsel, yeah, John?
I have two verbal updates, if you'd like to hear those now, or I can wait until council items. We've had communication with county staff on the library project, which is very positive. Sheldon Kay tells me now that they have been given the go-ahead to engage Providence Consulting as the consultant to do the study for the Benita project. They are just waiting for a county attorney to approve the form of the contract, and Sheldon anticipates that we're going to have the consultant ready to start doing, they're basically boots on the ground, start, planning for the public outreach within the next couple of weeks. Obviously, as that progresses, I'll let you know, but that's a very positive sign that that's moving forward.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, do you have anything else?
Yes, one other update, and this is regarding our project with the county on the beetroot nourishment for Benita Beach. Spoke to Steve Boutell, they've indicated, again, that this was now back on the track towards construction this year. We've got a, I want to make sure I get this right, it's a pre-bid meeting set for March the 7th, I want to make sure again that I get these right, there'll be actually a short listing of the engineering work for March the 7th, then a pre-bid meeting for the actual construction bidders on April the 11th. The bids will be due back to the county by April 22nd, and county staff hopes to get the successful bidder then to the Board of County Commissioners for contract approval at their first May meeting. So we're back on schedule, they fully intend to be able to get this up and running and construction done prior to peak storm season, so we're in good shape.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, I apologize for forgetting that you were in the queue there, go right ahead.
Well, and it's back to this Citizen Water Strategy Task Force, and I just want to make sure I understand the vote, so that when we have to prepare the documents, we prepare the documents correctly. It's for Tasks One and Two, and it'll be followed, we have a short form for under $35,000 projects, and it's not to exceed the price of Project One and Two, the 19,000, correct?
I believe that's the motion, is that the...
That's as I understood it, I just want to make sure.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And Carl, do you have anything else, or staff, any members, anything else? We are two mayor and council member items and reports. Let's see, oh, it's Rusty. Mike, make your mark here, brother.
Yep.
Oh, that was...
Yeah.
Well, the last meeting, we discussed what was going to happen to Rusty, and I believe
everybody kind of was fine with keeping Rusty where he is and using the secondary dog at the new dog park, so that's how it's written.
Would you like to make that motion?
No, Mr. Mayor, before that motion's made, before that motion made, the small dog, Marley, belongs to my wife and I.
Well, you need to get a leash for him.
Well, I know that. We, in good faith, donated it to the city, but I think we should have some say on where it belongs.
Okay, well, so why don't we just go ahead and, we'll tend to Rusty for now, how about that?
Okay.
All right, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to keep Rusty where he's at in Depot Park.
I'll second that.
They have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Pick up your poopy, too.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longkart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Rusty, stay.
Okay, got it.
Rusty's made a lot of new friends.
All right, let's see, Mike, do you have anything else for us before we carry on here?
Um, no, I think I'm good.
Okay, good, all right, let's see, now we have to consider requiring removal process for North Fork Island pines on residential property. Stephen?
Yes, sir, you heard April Hoover before gave her presentation, I've been over to her house, I know what she's talking about, and I would like to see an ordinance developed, but I do know that procedurally, we should, my request is to take this to the Tree Advisory Board at this point in time.
Okay, I think that's a good request, do you want to make that, make that a motion?
Please, it's a motion.
I'll second that.
It's a motion and a second, to go ahead and hand this to the Tree Advisory Board and get their opinions, and get them to make recommendations on how to handle that. Do you want to go ahead and broaden that to include other, not just Norfolk pines, just maybe other nuisance trees?
That'll be fine.
Okay, all right, motion and a second, anybody understand it? Okay?
Well, we're...
Yeah, go ahead.
We're not approving doing anything.
No, no.
It's strictly for more discussion with the Tree Advisory Board.
Following the procedure.
Well, the larger discussion will be held by the Tree Advisory, they'll make a recommendation and bring it back to us.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slakda?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
in the river, cleaning up out there. So, that's awesome. I like that partnership. I also want to make everyone aware, so that if you're driving down Old 41, check out the Benita Springs Historical Society McSwain House. It looks awesome. I just want to make a shout-out to Sherwin-Williams. Thank you so much for donating the paint. Thank you to Bill Simons from Cherokee Painting for doing the painting. And the new doors came from a historical home in Tampa. It looks awesome. They are working so hard. So, with my shout-out, I also tell everyone, reminder that they have another project, and that's a roof, and that takes money. So, and a quick hello to Kathy McGrath and Rick Steinmeier. I know you're not here today. We miss you. And we'll see you at future meetings, we hope. I know you're watching, so thanks.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. Just mark your calendars, please, for April 10th. It's a Thursday. That's our third government school day. And that's the Charter School of Benita Springs. We'll be here from approximately nine in the morning till noon. So, that's the day they could come in and run the government for the day. Secondly, and I didn't mean to seem petty about the small dog, Councilwoman Gibson, we donated to the city. And I've spoken with the Director of Parks, and I asked where she wanted to have it. That's why I wanted to stop before a motion was made. And she believes that it belongs in Dog Park. So, we were going to ask to have it established in the Dog Park. And the other thing I want to warn people about is, don't miss a meeting. I missed the last MPO meeting, was elected chair of the MPO. So, my warning to you is, you don't miss meetings. Thank you very much.
All right. Just a quick update on my trip to Washington, DC, up there. I was not going to go this, start out, just so you know, because it is expensive to do this. And we wanted to be sure it was going to be a productive trip. So, John and Carl helped me work with the Florida, or Florida Association of Counties and with Mayor Keiker. And they finally convinced us that they had a good itinerary. So, I went. And I think it was productive. It was very frustrating, because I think that what existed up there, it was rather evident that there was a disconnect between what they considered to be the political reality and what was obviously the actual reality on the ground. What, strange, right? That doesn't ever happen, does it? So, that was the situation. And so, we did a lot of convincing, I think, there of some people. Some people, not so much. I think we met with over 35 of the offices up there, mostly in the House, because the Senate has a delay on the way. We just found out, and through your letter, you can see, it seemed, we seem hopeful that maybe a combined effort between the Florida League of Cities, Florida Association of Counties, and the rest of us, that maybe we've got their attention now. This is causing a lot of problems for people. I would ask you, if you're watching this, or anybody out there, if you receive a bill on your flood insurance, if you have a story to tell, please send it to us. I know, I don't think I've ever said that in my life. If you have a complaint, please send it to us. Now, but really, we need that, because they do not believe, they, a lot of the, our representatives, don't believe it. They think that the rates are going up 20%.
It's just so outrageous. Yeah, they can't believe it.
I said, and of course, as I told them, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't have come for 20%. I wouldn't have made the trip for 20%. $800 raise, I wouldn't have did that. It's 1,000%. I think, I mean, you know, like, do the math on that. It's, that's why we're here, you know? Insurance is supposed to be about spreading the risk, and you're not doing it. So, anyways, please, send in your stories. We need to send them to them so that they can see that this is real, that this is happening. And these aren't rich people. You're not rich people. If you were rich people, you'd still care, but you'd buy the house outright, and you wouldn't have flood insurance. I mean, that's as simple as that. So, please send all that information in there. It was a worthwhile trip. I won't bore you with how hard it was to get back to Florida. But it'll be a long time before I make that trip again. So, okay, with that, we're at.
Thank you for what you did.
No, well, thank you. It was, it was my pleasure. And I got to tell you, we got, I got so many great comments back from people. And I got to tell you, it's hurting people. So, that's not what we're supposed to do. All right, approval of minutes.
So, move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay. And we're council member items. I'm going to go ahead and start. Bill, are you ready?
Yes. Just one thing. This morning, in the news press, Manic Christian Park is going to be developed into a summer-type recreation with those kind of vehicles. And the people that are living there, from what I read this morning, will be, have been notified that they have to leave. So, that may cause some emotional circumstances for a lot of people. But that's what's planned. So, that's the latest information I have, because I read it this morning. By the way, it's not in Benita Springs. It's in incorporated Lee County. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Mike, you don't have anything for us? Okay, good. Pete, good. You're good. See you.
Just want to make sure, next month, we have no meeting at the first Wednesday, because we're going to be away. Is that correct?
Actually, it's the second meeting. We will be here for the first meeting. The second meeting will not be on the 19th. It'll be held on the 26th.
Right. Okay.
And that's it. Thank you. Thank you very much. Janet?
Okay, a couple of things. Thank you. Arbor Day is this weekend in the park, and that is with our Tropical Food Tree Club partnering with our tree board. And it's from nine to three. So, I want everybody to come down, check it out. March 1st, citywide cleanup. You meet under the banyan tree. The Imperial River Conservancy will be out in the river, cleaning up out there. So, that's awesome. I like that partnership. I also want to make everyone aware, so that if you're driving down Old 41, check out the Benita Springs Historical Society McSwain House. It looks awesome. I just want to make a shout-out to Sherwin-Williams. Thank you so much for donating the paint. Thank you to Bill Simons from Cherokee Painting for doing the painting. And the new doors came from a historical home in Tampa. It looks awesome. They are working so hard. So, with my shout-out, I also tell everyone, reminder that they have another project, and that's a roof, and that takes money. So, and a quick hello to Kathy McGrath and Rick Steinmeier. I know you're not here today. We miss you. And we'll see you at future meetings, we hope. I know you're watching, so thanks.
Thank you. Steve?
Thank you. Just mark your calendars, please, for April 10th. It's a Thursday. That's our third government school day. And that's the Charter School of Benita Springs. We'll be here from approximately nine in the morning till noon. So, that's the day they could come in and run the government for the day. Secondly, and I didn't mean to seem petty about the small dog, Councilwoman Gibson, we donated to the city. And I've spoken with the Director of Parks, and I asked where she wanted to have it. That's why I wanted to stop before a motion was made. And she's, believes that it belongs in Dog Park. So, we were going to ask to have it, have it established in the Dog Park. And the other thing I want to warn people about is, don't miss a meeting. I missed the last MPO meeting, was elected chair of the MPO. So, my warning to you is, you don't miss meetings. Thank you very much.
All right. Just a quick update on my trip to Washington, DC, up there. I was not going to go this, start out, just so you know, because it is expensive to do this. And we wanted to be sure it was going to be a productive trip. So, John and Carl helped me work with the Florida, or Florida Association of Counties and with Mayor Keiker. And they finally convinced us that they had a good itinerary. So, I went. And I think it was productive. It was very frustrating, because I think that what existed up there, it was rather evident that there was a disconnect between what they considered to be the political reality and what was obviously the actual reality on the ground. What, strange, right? That doesn't ever happen, does it? So, that was the situation. And so, we did a lot of convincing, I think, there of some people. Some people, not so much. I think we met with over 35 of the offices up there, mostly in the House, because the Senate has a delay on the way. We just found out, and through your letter, you can see, it seemed, we seem hopeful that maybe a combined effort between the Florida League of Cities, Florida Association of Counties, and the rest of us, that maybe we've got their attention now. This is causing a lot of problems for people. I would ask you, if you're watching this, or anybody out there, if you receive a bill on your flood insurance, if you have a story to tell, please send it to us. I know, I don't think I've ever said that in my life. If you have a complaint, please send it to us. Now, but really, we need that, because they do not believe, they, a lot of the, our representatives, don't believe it. They think that the rates are going up 20%.
It's just so outrageous. Yeah, they can't believe it.
I said, and of course, as I told them, I wouldn't be here. I wouldn't have come for 20%. I wouldn't have made the trip for 20%. $800 raise, I wouldn't have did that. It's 1,000%. I think, I mean, you know, like, do the math on that. It's, that's, that's why we're here, you know? Insurance is supposed to be about spreading the risk, and you're not doing it. So, anyway, please, send in your stories. We need to send them to them so that they can see that this is real, that this is happening. And these aren't rich people. You're not rich people. If you were rich people, you'd still care, but you'd buy the house outright, and you wouldn't have flood insurance. I mean, that's as simple as that. So, please send all that information in there. It was a worthwhile trip. I won't bore you with how hard it was to get back to Florida. But it'll be a long time before I make that trip again. So, okay, with that, we're at.
Thank you for what you did.
No, well, thank you. It was, it was my pleasure. And I got to tell you, we got, I got so many great comments back from people. And I got to tell you, it's hurting people. So, that's not what we're supposed to do. All right, approval of minutes.
So, move.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slacta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, public comment on anything at all. Come on forward. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, please come forward.
Fred Forbes, for the record. I want to say that we will be probably coming back